Buenos dias, senador. The Committee on Infrastructure Economic Development, Simon Sanchez High School, Disability Services Self-Determination, Stock Preservation Housing Public Accountability and Guam Build-Up Roundtable is called to order. The time is currently 3:12 PM, Tuesday, April 18, 2023. Notice of this hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and local media April 11, 2023, to meet the five-day notice on April 16, 2023, to a 48-hour notice. Thus, the meeting requirements for open government law. In addition to the notice, the hearing was also posted and available on the Guam Legislative Website. Materials for this roundtable here were shared on the committee drive and are also available for print upon request. Welcome/ welcome remarks. And I want to acknowledge no senators are with me, in disregard. Rules of conduct. I'd like to first provide general rules of conduct for the people present today. Individual speaking shall use only professional and respectful language and conduct. Please make sure that your name is stated for public record, and personal interference about the senator's character or motive of any senator or any individual is not permitted. The chairperson of committee may order the removal from the hearing of the committee or subcommittee of any member who is not a member of the La Estrella en Guam who fails to observe proper decorum, according to the 37th Guam Legislative Standing Rules. All must abide by the rules of conduct and quality assurance standards. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation. The purpose of this roundtable is to discuss economic diversification, to provide an update on economic diversification efforts and access to legislative appetite for reform in certain areas, primarily land leases, tax incentives. Before we begin presentations, I would like to welcome you here today and ask the representatives to introduce themselves, and then after we introduce each other, we'll just begin with the presentations. Okay, we'll start off with Ms. Mel.
Good afternoon. Melanie Mendiola with the Guam Economic Development Authority. I'm the Administrator/CEO.
Siska Hutapea. I'm the President of Cornerstone Valuation, but I'm here on my behalf as the co-chairs for the Governor Economic Working/ Economic Diversification Working Group.
My name is Joseph Cruz. I'm with Capress Reincorporation.
I'm also present today as a co-chair of the Governor's Economic Diversification Committee.
Frank Campillo, Cabo Sled Care Health Plan Administrator, and also a part of the tri-chair of the Governor's Economic Diversification Committee.
Joseph Borja, Department of Land Management.
Ed Camacho with GIDA, the Business and Economic Development Manager.
Marie Rages with the GIDA, Industry Development Specialist.
Diego Mendiola, Manager for GIDA's Real Property Division.
Carlos Perdallio, Deputy Administrator, GIDA.
Buenos dias, senador. Gerard Tovis, Department of Labor's Deputy.
Hello. I'm Jerome Uggan, Taxpayer Services Administrator from Department of Revenue and Taxation.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and begin with presentations with Ms. Mel Mendiola, Administrator of Economic Development Authority.
Thank you, Senator. I'd like to go ahead and defer to, or maybe we can get the PowerPoint that we provided up on the screen, and at the same time defer to the, one of the co-chairs of the Economic Diversification Working Group to provide introductory comments and the others as well.
Thank you, Senator, for having us, first of all. We started this Economic Diversification Working Group as a white paper that was compiled by the Guam Chamber of Commerce in 2020. We presented this white paper that has a plan about diversification, diversifying Guam economy to the governor and GIDA, and the governor then formed this Economic Diversification Working Group in winter of 2020. We've met a lot of time, and we started off with about 12 to 15 industries, and then after a while, we narrowed it down into five initiatives that Administrator Mendiola will talk more. But in general, I just wanted to thank you again for having us here because we think this is really, really important to have diversification on our economy. We have the two pillars of the military and the tourism. But if we have to start envisioning Guam, what do we want Guam 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 40 years from now? Where do we want to have Guam? And that would require paradigm shift from the legislature, from the executive branch, and we need to work together to make this happen. We cannot be stuck in the fear of, oh, there's going to be abuse of this, abuse of that. We need to take action, and that's why we're here. And, you know, I was telling, before the meeting, we were talking and we were discussing in a much, much smaller scale. I was giving an example that 11 years ago, when I opened my small business, I was scared, but I put my first house on sale so that I could have the capital to open my business. And there's always risk to everything, but if we work together, we could minimize that risk. But we do need to provide new economic pillars to support the UOG graduate, GCC graduate that's going to come. We need to provide new industries that can provide better-paying job. So with that, you know, I'd like to ask my co-chairs, Joe Cruz, if he has something else to add.
I think to add to what Siska says, I think we as the Economic Diversification Committee sees opportunity, but that opportunity can only be achieved as we have collaboration. So we appreciate this opportunity today to have this collaboration and achieve some of the goals that we feel are doable. Just as with any opportunity ahead, we just need to understand all the facts, and through this evolution of panning and discussions that we've had over the last two and a half, three years, I think what's very apparent as we will present today are there are some challenges that we hope to collaborate with you towards finding solutions. So we thank you for this opportunity to have this dialogue.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
These bright people have already said everything we need to say. I think our Administrator of GIDA will provide you a good briefing, you know, so after that we can answer some questions.
Awesome.
All right. So if we can get the PowerPoint back up on the screen, and I'll go ahead and kick this off, and we'll go to, so Siska also serves as a Director on our Board of Directors, and so we thank you for her active service on the board as well as with this particular committee. We can go to the next slide, and she also gave a background on how the Economic Diversification Working Group came to be. So let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So we started off as 15 subcommittees, which we then narrowed down into five key areas. Those five key areas were promoting international business presence in Guam, technology and telecom initiatives, regional construction, healthcare, and expansion of local industries. Next slide. I'll go ahead and discuss some of the progress made in some of these areas. So promoting international business presence, we were specifically looking at, you can go to the next slide. We were specifically looking at captive insurance, Trust Incentive Act, attracting investments and businesses from Asia. So there's been some interest in moving businesses out of China as well as relocating out of Hong Kong, and so Guam would like to set itself forward as a viable option. Over the last few years, we introduced a bill 306, which was vetoed due to some potential bond covenant violations, but we did put in a query to the AG with regard to bond covenants. And so once that's clear, once that's cleared up, our plan is to reintroduce it. But the goal is of the captive is to bring foreign capital to Guam and ensure risk outside of Guam, not to compete with local insurance companies and to provide some certainty with regard to QC benefits. The Guam Trust, we've been working, GIDA's been working on promoting and going to market with some promotional-type materials, and the same thing with businesses from Asia. We recently relaunched our website. It looks a lot better than it did six months ago, and the GIDA website was looking pretty, pretty terrible, and we relaunched it. It looks nice and snazzy, so if you're an investor from off-island, it might be a little more easily navigable to find the information that you need. Our next step in this is really promoting customer relationship management through a portal to take inquiries. So if a business from off of Guam wants to do business in Guam, they're not just sending an email into an abyss in the government. They could route it to a specific portal, and then we can then take care of them from there and direct them to our colleagues at agencies such as DRT and DOL. With regard to technology and telecom, GIDA is also present on the EPSCOR Advisory Committee, where we found that probably the most viable way forward is to try to get economic diversification technology initiatives to marry with academic research. That helps us get some seed money towards these initiatives, so get grant funding like EPSCOR funding to fund ideas, proof of concept, and then have it take off through different types of programs. Healthcare, there've been a number, actually today's, we have a case study in a few minutes that we'll discuss that has to do with pharmaceutical manufacturing. In addition, of course, the governor's vision to build a medical campus and to make Guam a medical hub for the region, that's something that, the initial steps that we've been taking have been working in the trades and building the healthcare workforce. So there's been a number of boot camps in areas such as medical billing, coding, medical assistance, and so on and so forth. Next slide. Under regional construction, we were looking at construction support, just generally supporting construction towards industries such as military as well as tourism. What we've been, you know, I'll talk a little bit later about building permit processes and things that we've done in the meantime to try to make some progress and headway in that area. There's also been significant work done. I think Jerry from DOL could probably talk later, or if you have queries about that, to talk about the significant workforce development initiatives that have been done through the Department of Labor, through the GRAP, the Guam Registered Apprenticeship Program. I believe the GRAP program sunsets this year, so that's something that needs to be revisited by the legislature to extend, should that be the desire. And we found from what we're finding out in competitor states, that that is a really important thing for us to do, is to focus on workforce initiatives. Ship repair, there's been a number of partnerships with, there's been a strong partnership with GCC. A number of cohorts have graduated. Transshipment, we're currently in negotiation with a contractor for a transshipment feasibility study, and a task force was authorized under public law 36-23, proffered by Senator Tina Munya Barnes. Of course, the governor's, the governor's really, like, the industry that she's very, very keen on is aquaculture. So we've been working with the governor to develop an Office of Aquaculture, to be a part of the Department of Agriculture. And in addition, aquaculture producers have been basically working towards starting their own aquaculture association, similar to the Farmers Co-op or the Fishermen's Co-op. GIDA obtained funding to complete an aquaculture, commercial aquaculture feasibility study. And what we found was that Guam should really not ever be the world leader in tilapia production, but what instead we should move towards is innovation in aquaculture. So similar to what I spoke about earlier with regard to technology, where Guam has access to the expansive Micronesian, the oceans of Micronesia, and the vastness of the ecosystem, the ocean, basically the ecosystem under the sea. And as such, Guam could be an excellent hub for developing technology, aquaculture technology, as well as experimenting on species that could then be farmed more economically in places where cost of doing business might be a little lower in areas of labor, in addition to areas of regulation. So, I mean, I'll give you an example. Guam has specific pathogen-free shrimp that is being grown down at the hatchery at the University of Guam. This hatchery was not really, it had just fallen into disrepair. The University of Guam had the foresight to issue an RFP to a private producer, and then come to the legislature for an extension on the lease so that they could enter into a lease for over five years into 30 years. That was approved, and this aquaculture producer, a private aquaculture producer, started exporting. I believe he reached six figures as far as exporting his shrimp fry to Southeast Asia, and then when COVID hit, the flights to Taiwan were canceled, and so he's basically having to start up again. But where he's making strides is not in the volume of the shrimp that he's producing for mass consumption, but in the fry that he's producing for producers that produce for all of us, right? So we're still buying shrimp from Vietnam, but the babies are coming from Guam potentially. So that's where we see, if we can replicate that activity 10, 20, 30 times over through an aquaculture innovation center, we believe that to be the future. And agriculture, primarily for food security first, and then export second, is what we're finding. Circular economy, we were able to get legislation passed to revamp our recycling qualifying certificate. So we once upon a time had a recycling qualifying certificate that gave abatements in real property, income tax, and BPT, dividend tax? It wasn't BPT? BPT? It was one of the most generous qualifying certificate programs we had, but nobody was applying because nobody could meet the recycling QC standards. You had to be moving tons and tons of waste, metric, thousands of metric tons of waste off of Guam to make it worth it. It was really only for businesses moving large amounts of scrap metals off of Guam. So what we did was we revamped it such that if you could prove that you were removing a significant amount of waste in any particular waste stream, then you could qualify. So the company that came to us first was a tire manufacturer, a tire company, where Guam produces something like 150,000 pounds of tire waste, or 150,000 tires a year. And this company, through the use of their machinery, could take up to 90,000 of those tires and turn them into building materials, specifically like tiles for application in athletic fields and things like that. So they were approved, and that's currently sitting at the AG's office in review. And so we were very hopeful that that will really send a sign to the, so there were articles done about it in magazines, national publications, and we think that's a really promising sign that Guam is a viable place to look at waste management solutions and turning it into something else, because there's nowhere that garbage goes after it arrives in Guam, right? Besides our landfill. Safe Haven, this was more of a viable, this was more of a viable low-hanging fruit during COVID. If you recall, when there were entry restrictions into many businesses and such, and this was something we were working towards, this could still, this is still something we can invest resources in, but it's certainly a smaller initiative relative to some of the others. The next slide, please. So what we thought would be really important is to do a competitive analysis. As Guam, as Guam is represented, as the governor represents Guam at Select USA, which is one of, which is a large event, wherein foreign direct investment looks at Guam in relation to other states and territories and where we fit with regard to our investor incentives, we want to know what we're going into, we want to, we want to know what we're going into this with. We want to know how competitive Guam is relative to other states and territories. What we found is, for the most part, when it comes to taxes, Guam's not that bad. When it comes to state, so the state corporate income tax, if you see across the columns there, California has an 8.84% corporate tax. Texas doesn't have a state corporate tax, but they do have a gross receipts tax of about 6%, 6%. New York has seven and a quarter, and so on and so forth. Guam doesn't exactly have a state corporate income tax. Why? Because we have a mirror tax code to the IRS. We only have the one layer, which apples to apples, looks the same as the other states, right? So we removed that layer. Guam also doesn't have a sales tax, but we do have a BPT, whereas other states, California has a seven and a quarter sales tax. Texas has a six and a quarter in addition to their BPT. So they have BPT and they have state sales tax. New York has state corporate income tax, federal corporate income tax, state sales tax, right? So overall, we think Guam stacks up pretty well. Hawaii, you have 6.4% state income tax, 21% corporate income tax, a 4% sales tax, versus in Guam, you have one layer of taxation, which is the federal mirror tax code in addition to BPT. And there's some exemption categories that may apply that Mr. Uggan can go into later, I suppose. And there is a state, if you look at the bottom column, it has, or the bottom row, the FDI jobs, these are the foreign direct investment jobs. We currently don't track the number of jobs that are being created or retained by foreign investment, foreign monies. The leading state is California with 844,000 FDI jobs, Texas with 678, New York with 531,000. Although we see the group here, I think the committee kind of, during our discourse, we said that we think that California in the coming years is going to go down, and Texas is going to go up for a number of factors, but people are leaving Califor, it looks like companies are leaving California, and they're going to states like Texas, Florida, and hopefully Guam. And so we'd like to start tracking that number. In the next few slides, so if you go to the next slide, we started to go into the states individually, just to pull out things that, just to pull out common factors, and I can certainly go into detail, but one of the areas I wanted to point out with regard to California was California, if, what we were seeing across states were different levels of tax incentives. Some of them gave tax credits, or tax credits associated with industry, tax credits associated with investment level, and sometimes tax credits associated with a specific level of investment that had to do with bringing down the cost of doing business, like use tax, for example. So for example, California has an energy, is that the one that has an energy credit, Marie? Yes. The Economic Development Rate Program authorizes utility discounts for businesses that require high-energy loads to operate or continue operating in California. So something like that, looking at the Energy Development Rate Program, that could be something very viable for Guam, where our utility costs are quite high. There's also state and sales and use tax exemptions, so this looks very similar to authorizing exemptions under the current, like, for example, right now wholesalers are exempt from BPT, right? Dave Santa's Level Businesses, startups are exempt from BPT, or they're, they have some exemption, exclusions from BPT, or reduced BPT, rather. There's some exemption, and there's some reduction, to be specific. And so those are things we could look at, maybe specific to industry. So kind of looking back at those industries we're interested in, technology, for example, if you start a technology company, this is what we can offer in terms of our tax exemptions and incentives. Texas, we also went ahead and pulled out the minimum wages from all of these different states, so you could just take a look, although we found that the minimum wage wasn't a driving function as to why businesses chose to invest or not. A lot of times it had to do with availability of resources, availability of workforce, and the availability of tax incentives, which is why we wanted to focus on that today. In Texas, they're giving everything away, including land. The government is. And so for example, Texas has what's called an enterprise fund, a deal-closing grant to companies considering a new project in which a single Texas site is competing with another viable out-of-state site. So this is literally what they do to take out another state. They say it's a performance-based grant that serves as a financial incentive for companies whose projects would contribute significantly to capital investment and new employment opportunities. So basically, if you do business in Texas, we will give you this money. If you decide to take that business elsewhere, then we give you nothing, right? So it's, and it's incentive, the incentive is focus your efforts in Texas. Don't do some of your stuff in Texas, and some of your stuff in California, and some of your stuff in, you know, Denver, right? They also have sales and use tax exemptions for certain industries, including manufacturing, natural gas, and data centers. And so you can really see, they also have in-state tuition for employees in economically diverse, so for example, Texas, they're trying to move forward in healthcare and being a leading healthcare industry state. So what they're doing is they're offering in-state tuition at Texas A&amp;M or UT to the children of employees who relocate to Texas. So it's kind of going across all levels. Renewable energy incentives, so if you're a business that wants to install solar energy, you can get deductions for corporate, for your, your corporate doesn't have to, usually you pass on the cost of a permit to the buyer of the system, right? So they're like, basically what, in order to create a competitive environment to bring down the cost of installing solar in a state like Texas, they're reducing the fees for permitting. So one of the interesting things, next slide, in New York, their minimum wage is $14 an hour, but they have a really interesting, the industries that they're looking at include craft beverage, digital game development, so very niche, and really along those lines, they're very niche-level incentives, such as the Life Sciences Research Development, Life Sciences Research and Development Tax Credit Program. So giving tax credits to specific, back to this whole, giving tax credits to a specific industry. This allows a 15%, fully refundable, 50% for a company that employs 10 or more. That's not a big business, only 10 or more employees. 20% for a company, a 20% tax credit for a company that employs fewer than 10, a credit is allowed for up to three consecutive years from first taxable year, and the credit is capped at $500,000 per year for a lifetime cap of $1.5 million. So it encourages some of the smallest of businesses, as long as you're doing life sciences research and development. And Commercial Tax Credit Program for production expenses for film, and because we see a lot of film moving towards like Canada, right, and out of the, out of the state. Florida, similar incentives across the board. I don't want to kind of, you know, in the interest of time, we can go into it, but you see similar themes across every single state that we looked at, and these are some of the most competitive states that are going to be present anywhere, whenever you're marketing, doing business in the US and North Carolina. We at least want to have a competitive edge, and we can go, let's go all the way to the competitive analysis with Guam and the US territories. We at least want to have a competitive edge among the territories, meaning Guam, Puerto Rico, USVI, and American Samoa, and then Northern Marianas. So far, the one thing that we, the only, the one thing that Puerto Rico does have that Guam and our counterparts in the territories don't have is Puerto Rico has a 10.5% sales tax. We do have, I believe, the lowest unemployment, we have a similar unemployment to US Virgin Islands, but the only one that tracks foreign direct investment jobs is currently Puerto Rico, and they have 24,000 relative to a population of 3 million. So it's quite small, the foreign direct investment. But if we go into the, if we go into the benefits that our competitor territories are offering, what you see is, I think, across the board, Puerto Rico currently has probably the most sophisticated offerings when it comes to incentives and strategic development. So Puerto Rico has an incentives code wherein they make a pack, basically create a package of incentives. A tax exemption on capital gains, an exemption on property, 75 on property taxes, 75% on municipal construction rate, 50% on municipal tax licenses. And so one thing that Puerto Rico also offers is these incentives are an after-the-fact, compliance and monitoring happens after you've got, you get your project going, you establish in Puerto Rico, you get your project going, and then you can claim the incentives basically immediately, whereas in Guam, you have to get your project going, really going off to the races, and then you come for the QC, which is not a guarantee. So there's more certainty in investing in Puerto Rico with their current incentives than there is in investing in Guam. I also wanted to point out the, is it, maybe not Puerto Rico, US Virgin Islands has the, has the tech park, right? Oh, yes, okay. So Science City. Puerto Rico also has done 70 acres, a 70-acre parcel of land owned by the government, coded to science, technology, and research to be developed as a city of sciences. The significance of the tech parks offered by the territories, including Puerto Rico and the US Virgin Islands, is a steeply reduced rate of rent. So under the current, current Guam code... So under the current, current Guam code, the, if, for example, if you're the Guam National Lands Commission, or the CLTC, or any government agency, the first thing is, whether solicited or unsolicited, you have to put out an RFP. After you put out the RFP, you can accept no less than market value of rent. And then after the market value of rent, if you want to go beyond five years, you have to come to the legislature. All of that was put into place to protect because of a legacy of abuses, right? But I think it's time, if you look at all these other states, most of them have set aside a research and technology park, some not very big, such as the one in Puerto Rico is only seventy acres, right? And some that have been much larger. But legislatively, what we could look at is, we can say, okay, based on all the data, well, the number one, the competitive data, but number two, where we are promising, perhaps we can look at setting up our own park, and our park would come at reduced rent for a specific amount of time. If it works, it works. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But at some point in time, the, a business would, the market level rent or profit-sharing arrangement would kick in. So I know, for example, the current leasing arrangement with the aquaculture producer and the University of Guam is that the aquaculture producer has a reduced rent agreement and a profit-sharing agreement with the University of Guam, because as this company grows, then the University of Guam should experience the upside. So I think it might be worth it, sir, to look at agencies that have an appetite to do this with unused land, but then also to bring it together with federal or other sources of funding to be able to bring infrastructure, because a lot of these places, it's ready, it's tech, technology, they're infrastructure-ready. Power is already there, water's already there, sewer's already there, and so we're not literally asking people to come in from scratch. American Samoa and I believe the Northern Marianas both have a minimum wage less than Guam, and they're both selling that as their main selling point, but they have a lot of the same challenges we have with regard to, with regard to access to land and so on and so forth. However, we did want to point out that American Samoa does have a hundred-acre industrial park with lots available for up to fifty-five years at a rate of twenty-five cents to forty-five cents per square foot per year. And a Workforce Investment Act wherein this, fifty percent of workers' wages for up to one year are supplemented by the government. And so American Samoa, they are much more remote than Guam, especially when it comes to our brothers and sisters in Asia. Having said that, like Texas, they're really trying to make it cheap and desirable to build business in American Samoa. So with all that, we did want to kind of point out to some of the Guam's limitations, and then our, some of our colleagues will start to chime in here, is that with the qualifying certificate program, this is a unique offering that Guam has that does set us apart from all states and territories in, as far as Texas and California, there's nothing they can do about federal taxes. But with our qualifying certificate program, we can offer rebates. That is unique. However, the qualifying certificate is not a guarantee type of, a guaranteed type of investment. So one of the discussion points we've had at GITA was, do we tighten up the QC program such that there's almost a pre-qualification and then approval? So if you're, so if you're, if you're, for example, the circular economy QC is a good one. A business should come in, be able to demonstrate, get kind of a, demonstrate that they're removing a significant amount of waste from the waste stream, get a pre-approval from GITA to go ahead and start drawing down and utilizing those tax credits while it goes through the different processes. And then in addition, land is a, it's a big issue. Private land is expensive. Well, first off, land is in short supply. Guam will never be Texas. And so, and the five-year government lease law has provided a lot of limitations. I wanted to go ahead and turn it over to our business development manager at Camacho, as well as Frank Campillo, who had firsthand experience with, with a company looking to do business in pharmaceutical distribution, in pharmaceutical distribution. And the next slide is Pacific AA Group, we'll start to discuss.
Thank you, Mel. Last year, we attended Select USA. It's the US Department of Commerce's largest event to attract FDI, foreign direct investment to the US, for foreign companies wanting to invest in fifty states and territories. So the Economic Diversification Working Group and GITA sent the delegation of myself and two of my staff to attend this event, and we were overwhelmed by what we experienced. Now, this is not the first time at GITA, GITA attended this. In the past, GITA representatives did attend. But we were out there for the, for the four-day event, and we met with a good number of potential interests in Guam, and one of them actually came out real soon after we got back. They were a pharmaceutical manufacturing company with a large operation in California. They were out of Miramar, in that's part of the world, whether it's, I'm not exactly sure where Miramar is, but Director Siska, over here correcting me this morning. So they were out there and they had, they were looking at relocating their California facility over to Texas or possibly Puerto Rico. We were able to interject ourselves into that move and invited them to Guam, and they came out within, I think, a month, month and a half, and they did a real good due diligence on, on what they were looking at. We brought in all the tax experts, we brought in realtors, we brought in immigration attorneys, whole slew of people, government officials, so they can talk to, so they can understand the lay of the land, customs officials, airport, port authority, to understand, is there an opportunity for such an operation in Guam? They were a big, they're a big operation. They were, timing was of the essence because they wanted to sell the facility, the land in California and make that investment somewhere else. So they had the, the timing was very important to them. So they came out to Guam and they looked at Guam, and they were very, very serious about Guam. The owners are from Miramar, so this part of the world was closer to, to where they're from than California, so that was one of the driving points. And then they realized they can fulfill their manufacturing, manufacturing out of Guam, air or sea. We had the capacity to do it. We may not have had the frequency, but they, that was something they can work on. So in our, in our discussion with them, they gave us a list of things that might be important for them to, to consider Guam. And one of the, two of the most, three of the most important things they talked, we talked about is workforce development. First and foremost, to develop any type of manufacturing pharmaceutical items in Guam took a different skillset we didn't have in Guam. So they wanted to work with us and discuss how we can help subsidize some of that. Secondly was the tax incentives that the Guam provided through the qualifying certificate program. And one of the things that Mel was mentioning, that a lot of these, a lot of these companies, when they look at Guam, and I've been doing this for eight years and all these trade missions that I go to, they look for certainty. Our QC is a qualifying certificate plan. It's not certain you would get it. And a good example is just one that we, we had in our board meeting a couple of weeks ago, a couple of months ago, in the Don Don Donkey. So there is no certainty. A lot of investors look for certainty if they're looking at making major investments like that. And the last thing is the initial outlay and cost to open a facility in Guam, which was land. And they came out, they talked to realtors, they looked at what the possible buying land versus leasing land or leasing from the government of Guam, and there were, there were obstacles in both. And I can have Frank Campillo, who was on these conversations with me, talk a little more about that. Frank?
Yes, Senator. So through the process, we came to the, to the conclusion that not having access to clear, defined rules, and when I say that is because even the qualifying certificate is not clear for everybody, you know, so, and not having time-defined regulations on approvals is not desirable for investors. We are going to attract manufacturing, and we're going to provide government of Guam land, a five-year time lease is impossible because by the time you go through the process of getting the land ready, getting the permits, you are into four years already. And I'm one who has lately decided that it's better not to say a lot, but I'm going to say just a couple of more things. So recently, there was a Sixty Minutes episode on AI, and I don't know if you had the opportunity to watch that. And the CEO of Google was talking about how changing in his life was, and he was born in nineteen seventy-two. Just imagine this, nineteen seventy-two, it's only some fifty years ago, and how a life-changing to his family was having a rotary fund. He talked about that. And now he's the head of one of the largest IT corporations in the world, and defining what AI is doing. At the time, that is shortening things, and the purpose of me making that appointment is that we're getting a little bit behind the curve. We need to, first of all, realize that we have great people. I mean, the studies that are being put by, the people at GITA, the information that they're gathering, and the competition that we have to deal with is enormous. We have to give the tools if we want to have economic diversification. And the tools include additional incentives besides the tax incentives that we have today. Thank you, Senator.
So, yeah, I think the five-year land lease is kind of difficult, right? I think the only thing, again, I've stated is, only thing that you get for five years is a car, and that's the worst investment. So I don't think a multimillionaire or tycoon wants to invest on Guam for five, with a five-year, you know, trusted guarantee. We have to put some other opportunity for that investment to even come here. I mean, we have a whole apron of property across the Tejon area and the airfield. We can probably throw Amazon up there as an investment opportunity as well, but I don't blame them for not wanting to invest in Guam because it's unfortunate. You're going to have five years guaranteed, but then if you don't stand up your facility in two years, then you're just wasting your investment, right? It's a very harsh impediment.
Disadvantage.
Yeah, disadvantage, I guess. Like in any, any real, real estate development, I'm pretty sure Mr. Siska can echo that sentiment, that a mortgage is at thirty to twenty-five years, right? And then in that lifetime, the, the mortgage is set at six, three to six percent, depending on how good your credit is. But at the end of the day, the, the investment opportunity is there for thirty years, and you know, you, you can slowly, gradually knock out the deficit, and as well, the investment, you know, is equal, right? So I think, I understand where you guys are coming from with that five-year lease.
And I think to add, Senator, is, you know, we see Guam right now, there's, there's a demand for attention. So when people look at Guam, they're going to analyze what we have to offer. So, you know, a lot of the information that was shared today, I mean, it's important to highlight that because in order for us to be successful, really, we have to be open to these type of incentives. When companies look at Guam as an opportunity, because Guam is in the limelight right now, they're going to evaluate what it's going to cost. I mean, you talk about Amazon, I mean, you know, why can't we promote Guam as a potential distribution hub for Amazon? First of all, we don't have, you know, the incentive for them to be attracted, as you mentioned. So we can go to these companies, but what do we go with? We don't have a lot of tools. So essentially, you know, what we're asking for is just tools. And then the benefit of that, it's not one-sided, it is the island benefits, right? I mean, one of the challenges we have right now is, as Siska mentioned earlier, what do we do with our UOG graduates today? What do we offer them? Right? I mean, we have different industries here, but these guys are majoring in engineering, which we have a demand for, but then all the business majors, where do they go? They work for the government, they work for the US government, they work for the local government, where we have private sector opportunities that we can generate. There's demand out there, but in order to secure this demand, we got to have the tools. So hopefully through this presentation, you know, through joint collaboration, we can come up with those tools. Because we can't go out to market and say, hey, do business in Guam if you have nothing to offer. Again, we're not giving away the house, there's a benefit, right? And it's going to be a two-way discussion anyhow, but we need to come to the table with something, and right now we don't have a lot. And, you know, referencing the lease terms, I mean, when companies look at time, they look at what it's going to cost for them to, the investment, can they recover their costs in time to make this benefit, this project worthwhile? So leases and cost of leases, terms and conditions, workforce, they're all part of that equation. It comes down to what the math is before businesses start up. Unless we make the math attractive, we're going to have a hard time attracting people.
What GITA found was that the most competitive, right now, we're doing a good job with, we believe that the workforce development aspect of the incentives we're offering, on-the-job training, the GRAP, and so on and so forth, if we continue, we don't need to build anything new, we just need to continue to provide the Department of Labor with the support they need, and even expand the support they need to continue doing more of what they're doing. And we also found that the tax incentives, it's not the amount we're, we're doing, we're doing, it's, it's the, it's more the, how the vehicle is being used. And so we're doing okay, we offer good incentives, the level of incentives, it's fine, it's the method with which we are distributing those incentives that is a little, that could use some work. But the biggest two things that have been identified have been, of course, the cost of doing business with regard to the land and, and the, the time required for the building, licensing, permitting, and all of that in the development of any hard construction costs. Yeah.
I like that, I'm sorry. Let me just, Mr. Cruz, I just wanted to thank you for your continuous investment in workforce development. Jerry, I know that we have a lot of great investments in workforce development, and you have my commitment to reevaluating the law with the GRAP program. What we need to update, I'm sure it's pretty dated, and what we need to in place for it to move forward and be a more, a better institution for us to get our next generation of employees pushing, pushing harder.
And to add to that, Senator, I think we need to look at all different skillsets, not just in the industry side, but also in the business side. I mean, we're looking at a federal government that's growing fast, marine base, looking at people, where do these people come from, right? In the old days, when we were growing up, we had like the International Business College, where we can teach basic office skills, you know, accounting skills. We don't have that today, right? We should expand the apprentice program to those type of skillsets. And other jurisdictions do it as well, because everybody needs workers. We don't have enough of them.
Definitely, I share that sentiment with you. I, I recently had interns at my office, and they didn't even know how to sign their name on a check. So I think we definitely need to go back to the basics. We need to help people navigate their real-life scenario, know how to pay taxes, because we've had a business people that don't know how to pay taxes. So, you know, I'll throw it back to Mr. Ed Camacho to go on his comments.
What I was going to say is, when we talk with investors out there, time is money, and going back to the permitting process, if it takes, I mean, we're talking about large investments in Guam that's going to create hundreds of jobs. If, if, if it takes two to four years to clear the process just to get a building permit, it's not going to happen. And we've seen that at GITA in the past. We even had one hotel developer that we even issued a QC to, and after several years, they just said enough is enough. They, they realized it was just, and they, they had some type of mitigation of some endangered species on their property that they couldn't mitigate the process. So they ended up walking away from the whole process. And that was going to be a five-hundred-room hotel that they ended up walking away from. So there are a lot of businesses out there that are looking at Guam, but it's this permit, and there's a lot on the books right now, they're, they're stagnated because of that. That's a major issue for large investments looking at Guam. Thank you.
And we believe that there has been, the administration has made progress in the business licensing and permitting from the perspective of this acquiring software to, to track and to see where the pipeline, where the holdup is, and the bottlenecks are. But I think what's, what's going on is, we don't want this environment of competing, there's, it's, there's mixed messages that oftentimes come out where we're trying, where it seems that it's becoming increasingly more difficult to pass inspections, the rules change, or the appetite for, or the enforcement changes, the standards of enforcement change. And that's where, that's where we're, I think that's the next step for the business licensing improvement, because the, when the governor put up the licensing and permitting task force, they did a full review, and that was great. They put together a manual to get business going. They, we put out procurement for, for software to standardize the process. And I think that'll work, but a lot of these investments are, they need to be, a lot of these investors need to be handheld, especially if they're in the niche, like a niche business that requires a significant capital investment. And that's where I think that we need, we have a lot more work to do and more reform that needs to happen quickly.
Yeah, I know my school was, had snails on its property too. And I, you know, I just want to put this interesting position out there, that once upon a time in two thousand and six, it costed sixty million dollars for six schools to be built, elementary, a middle school, and I think three elementary schools, one middle school, and one, and two high schools. In that time, you know, in two thousand and six, it was sixty million. Now, just to build probably one high school, which is Simon Sanchez High School, it might be upwards of a hundred fifty thousand, a hundred fifty million. And that's just one school. So, you know, time is money, investment is money, and I think in any, in any investment, there are risks. And of course, the investor wants to minimize the risk and minimize any possible liability, right? So I, I know that infrastructure development is also very costly, and again, you have another commitment from me is to try to solve the permit issues.
I've been working with the Lieutenant Governor to try to figure out that issue. I know we have a lot of issues on our island, but again, the only way to solve them is to work collaboratively with the private and government agencies, right?
Senator, I know you've understood this impracticality of the five-year lease, but I wanna bring it home. Just if a project requires GLUC approval, that already take 12 to 24 months out of the five-year lease. And then to bring in that GLUC approval notice of action into a building permit, groundbreaking, it could take another 12 to 24 months. And with all that, they only going to be, only have one year, you know, to use that five-year lease. And time is money, like you said, time is money. We have, you know, I have a client that are submitting a building permit, request for building permit, and because of the delay at the beginning of his project, it was 3.3 million to build his warehouse. Just a few months later, it becomes 4 million, 20%. And so I just wanna bring it home, but you already understood it. But, and the other thing is to, I think, you know, we need to be a good steward of public land. I've told Diego this before many, many times, but, you know, just for example, CLTC. We can identify which part of land that CLTC has that can be leased into a good commercial use and use that money to, you know, do the survey on the CLTC land, put infrastructure so that we could give land that has utilities and people can build the land and utilize it properly. So I don't think we've been a good steward for the public lands, and that needs to change.
Definitely, we have some people that think progress is no progress. So I love development, and I think that's the only way to have economic development is to actually allow some more development to happen on lands. Obviously, if the land stays as is, it's not gonna be any different. And that's what we've been doing for the longest time, is having the same land parcels in the same hands and not moving anywhere in its lifetime. Chamor Land Trust's program is supposed to be helping people have better lives. But the frank reality is, the government of Guam has failed to help those people have affordable housing when we have an opportunity to give people lands. And whether it's a director, this administration, it's 26-year-old problem. You keep doing the same thing over and over, we're never going anywhere. So I, again, I share the frustration that we do have with potential investors. And you know, there's a lot of public-private partnerships that have been very successful. And I'm sure the cost for infrastructure development can be taken up by a private investor. But the investor has to see his own light at the tunnel too. So we need to work together to really solve these problems once and for all. Because I oversee public works. If I could, I would sign every permit out there. But that's just not the reality, because we've also put all these bureaucracy issues into this agency to try to mitigate issues, again, on the government's side. I totally hear it. But again, there's a lot of property, if the hospital is built on Backroad, then it's not a hail mary for the development groups to go back there and start putting stores. You're gonna have like ten Koreans putting up stores back-to-back on Backroad. And then you're gonna have probably another group of warehouses popping up, probably for medicinal uses. The doctors will start probably investing on Backroad. So at the end of the day, you have to put the investment, a worthy investment together, and then the community will start growing, like Dedito. It didn't just grow overnight, it grew over time. But the people that are anti-development, come on, you gotta see the reality. If you don't have jobs, people are gonna leave, and that's what's happening over our island. People are leaving, there's no jobs, there's no other opportunities. Once upon a time, SRF, I never worked at SRF, but it's the famous story of all the older people. But once upon a time, you had so many jobs, you had so many skilled trades, opportunities for you to grow down at the port. Now, it's not a reality, a lot of our people are relocating, one for, it's really hard to live here, right? I've been getting flack about raising the minimum wage to $15. But people, living here is very hard. My salary is $50,000. Trust me, I feel it. At the end of the day, we gotta do things differently, and we gotta think about the future, because I'm only here for two years. So I'm not here for a long time, I don't know if I'm gonna be elected next term, but we gotta make a difference. If you cannot make a difference, then you're part of the problem. And that's the frank reality. If you wanna see progress, you gotta be part of it, start digging. Because if you're just gonna hold the shovel and take pictures for the social media spotlight, very good. I'll see you next year for another ribbit cutting. That's my concerns, I mean, that's my statement. But trust me, I love development, and I really wanna see our island flourish. I want our people to wanna stay here. And I don't think we need to really be attracting foreign investment because we can't even attract our people. People don't even wanna work in Gov Guam. You can go on base and work $25 an hour just to bushcut the corner of the base. And you literally have more rights to bushcut that corner of the lot. So, you know, we gotta, you know, again, the only way that we're gonna see things grow or get any better is if we actually work together. And I'm only one person in this 15-body. But I totally hear you guys' concerns, and economic development is one of my campaign pillars because I know a lot of people in my generation relocated, again, like GPD, it's not competitive. Right now, in Texas, it's $75,000 sign-on bonus. That's awesome. Yeah, time is definitely not on our side. And we're all trying to captivate a workforce that's faithful and loyal, but it's hard. People cannot be faithful and loyal if the company's not faithful and loyal to them, especially in Gov Guam. Let's say, 10 years, we weren't giving merit bonus, 10 years, we're not giving increment, and we're trying to fight about whether they're worthy or not. And it's only a big number because we felt to give it in its timely manner. So 2% times 10 is what? 22. But let's fight about it again, right? Even the land, again, I'm 26-years-old, I'm very blessed to be a senator. I was challenged, you don't have an education, you shouldn't be a senator. Who are you to run for office? Well, a lot of the problems that my generation was promised to be fixed, especially my school, hasn't been fixed. Now my teachers are hating on me because they think I felt them. But there's a lot of bureaucratic issues that we had to face together to finally see some light at the end of the tunnel. We got a snail, the snail got more rights than me. So again, I hear the environmentalists, but again, I think Ricky Bredalio said it in the best terms that, you know, sometimes the needs of the living far away the needs of the dead. And you gotta put the past in the past and carry on. Thank you. And we gotta find, figure out these land issues before Mr. Joe Boar retires.
Senator, now I know why I got invited to this.
Because you're my favorite.
Let me just give you some points that I wrote here, and that in almost every slide, their land is on there. Public lands, for the most part, great majority, is actually being held by the Chamor Land Trust Commission. And Chamor Land Trust Commission, although authorized by law to enter into commercial leases, haven't had the capacity to develop their commercial rules and regulations for almost 20, almost 20 years. The ancestral lands commission by law is allowed to be a developer, and so far, they've brought in $15 million. So they have a pretty good, thanks to the management of Gita, and that, get 14% from that.
We need to raise that.
Some incentive on that. But, you know, industrial parks, you know, Guam has two industrial parks. They've got it where Gita is, Track 259. There is some vacant area in the back there, but some of the original lessees of those areas back there have now turned into landlords and have subleased those properties on there. The government does have land leases. In the late 1980s, the Department of Agriculture entered into 50-year leases of these large tracts of land for agricultural purposes. Those leases don't expire until 2030. So the availability of those huge tracts of land. Land Management administers three leases. Pacific Underwater Observatory, which is the Fish Eye Park, underwater park there, and they're up to date in their lease payment. Proceeds go to the Land Management Land Survey Revolving Fund, which is basically our operational budget. But at one point in time, Pacific Underwater Observatory subleased an area down there to a local jet ski company that employed 32 employees. However, what that company was paying for rent was basically picked up by the sub-lessee. The other lease that we administer is the Transport Radio Lease down there in Moleso. Their payment is up to date, and the proceeds go to the Department of Land Management Revolving Fund. The third lease that we administer is a lease for submerged lands down in Moleso, the Evergreen Pier, to a private individual, Charles Sambly. And that was the lease entered originally by, authorized by the Department of Interior for submerged lands in there. So those are the three leases that we have, which are on government property that Land Management administers. However, there are a lot more leases. The Dedito Buffer Strip, that lease fell apart. You have occupants in there, Shell, Payless, American Groceries, Dedito Mall, Machinano Development, Mobile, 76, and Bank Pacific. Two-thirds of those proceeds should go to Dedito, one-third should go to Chigo. Account status, three question marks here for me. Those monies are supposed to go to the mayors, and then talking with Siska on the stewardship of the land. Global Recycling, on Batula Road, a much-needed service, metal recycling. No lease, no license, just trespassory occupancy. Chamor Land Trust, years ago, previous administrations gave them a letter of authorization to operate without any conditions, without having to pay rent, without having to do it, you know? So that's what we have. Big chunk of land, a much-needed service. I used to joke around that you go to Global Recycling, you put your metal there, and they send it, I believe they sent it to Taiwan. At that time, I thought they sent it to China, and then they send aircraft carriers over here in return. So it's a prime metal recycling company. Guam International Golf Course. It's under Chamor Land Trust Commission. It's a legislative lease transferred to Chamor Land Trust Commission. I don't think they've paid rent in two years. That's Chamor Land Trust issue, not Land Management like them. That is really a prime area to turn into a residential subdivision. You've got the infrastructure, you even have monitoring wells there for the environmentalists. Cultural Center leases. We have 20 acres in Dedito. We only have one legitimate occupant in there, the Palau Abay, they have three lots. And there are other NGOs, nonprofit groups, that have 503 CS certification from Bavarian Tax on that. That's 20 acres. There is reserved by law also 20 acres in the south for cultural center. However, you need a four-wheel-drive vehicle or an all-terrain vehicle to get in there. It's over by Fact P Point. We have a lease to the Veterans of Foreign Wars down in Agate. And we have two commercial lots, when I say we, I mean the public, I mean the government, over there in the Sagueno Lazen area. And one of them has quarters on it, and the other one, I believe, the Land Trust gave a lease out on that property. These are commercial lots along Isengson. The Land Trust also has several leases for cell towers to the various communication companies, and also a lease to a KGTF up in Baragada Heights. At one time, the Chamor Land Trust had a lease for IBC up in Chigo. I don't think anything was ever paid on that. At one time, Unix Corporation was occupying Oka Point, Ipau Point, for a staging area to build the four Emerald Green, originally Emerald Green condos. They were supposed to at least fence the area off. That never happened. That area now is infested with nuts, nails, but 20 billion fire ants, 20 billion queens, not the ants themselves, but queens, and infested, of course, by rhino beetles. And there's a white goods farm in there. It's been proliferating. Long-term, my cousin, Co-op has a lease down to the boat basin for a year, dollar a year, rather. And then we have other good leases, Cushion Zoo leases. And then, of course, we have the ITC building that Track 259 where Gita's at. And those leases are, some of those tenants, I believe, in there have become landlords. And then Chamor Land Trust have five leases with the Department of Education for schools, for Chamor Land Trust schools. So your inventory of available government lands is really, really small, but there is still land over there, you know? My son asked me the other day, he said, Dad, you know, we have this problem with Taiwan chip manufacturing. How come we can't do that on Guam? How come we can't set up a chip manufacturing here in Guam? What does it take to, you know, to get that thing going? You know, I couldn't answer, and like that. So that's what we have. Now, in terms of, I see my friend Jerry, in front of, in terms of temporary workforce housing, the Guam Land Use Commission has approved 22 units of workforce housing. That doesn't mean that it's built, but the Land, rather, the Land Use Commission has approved 22,000. Of course, these guys are not gonna build the workforce housing and wait for, you know, to come, wait for customers to come. They have to get certification and work with Department of Labor that, hey, we're bringing in some people, and by the way, you guys need to certify where they're gonna house them at. So, and if they don't have housing for them, they don't bring them in. So it's kinda like a circular economy in that sense, and like that. But there are 22,000 units approved by the GLUC. We believe there's about 3,000 units built. And just recently, Department of Labor announced that there are 4,000 workers, yeah, workers. So where's the other 1,000, where are they staying at? They're staying at, allowed by law, in homes, homes as long as not, they're not related. That's the qualification. And they're staying in apartments as long as they're not 51%, yeah, occupying. So that's where those other 1,000 are in there, you know? And then, and then this issue about the building permitting and licensing. When I came to the Department of Land Management, which the directors, the executive secretary of the Guam Land Use Commission, the Land Use Commission hadn't been functioning in like six to nine months about that, I think they had like one or two meetings. They had trouble meeting call rooms and like that. But the governor and the legislature made a conscious efforts to get at least the commission staffed, not full commissioners. And right now, I believe, we have four members. There's a new applicant or nominee going before the legislature. We'd like your help to at least consider that nominee, which would bring it to five, which would be a full complement. And then also, the legislature changed something in the application process. And that's the creation of a hybrid commission, where projects that are more than $3 million have to be reviewed by the hybrid commission. And this hybrid commission is made up of up to three or four mayors. One mayor is the one whose municipality the project is in, and the other three are surrounding one's in that. But according to the law also, they have to hold two public hearings, aside from the public hearing necessary for the Guam Land Use Commission. public hearing necessary for the Guam Land Use Commission. So a project could have five public hearings required. That's where maybe the, and then those public hearings have to be duly noted. It have, it has to be noticed. If they are not noticed properly, it won't get before the commission, you know? That's 150 days. In the perfect world, we think that the Guam Land Use Commission can process an application in 90 days, you know, which is not really, you know? And then you also have the historical archaeological issues that may come up, endangered species, like you said, the snails. Well, you know, they say the snails are endangered species and how the hell do you find them all over the place? Find them in Elik, you find them in Dedito, find them in Manengun. I mean, you know, at a recent conference, at a recent conference, I think it was last year, Planters Symposium, they had the, I don't know, Fish and Wildlife people, anyway, the ones that were in charge of the snails. But you know, they, in the conference, they presented them at 3:30, the last day of the conference. From a conference that started out with 150 people attending, by the time the snail people came on, there were like 14 people in there. Yes, we were. Land Management staff was the last one there because we wanted to ask the question. Since we call this endangered species and we're finding them all over the place and we know that because the precision statements come back from the, the relevant agencies. I asked them, I said, how do you take the snails off the endangered list? He didn't know. So you could put it on, you know, it's like, what did they say? It's cheaper to get divorced than it is to get married? It's, it, I, I couldn't get an answer from them.
It's cheaper to keep her.
And, you know, and you know your Simon Sanchez School? It was going on on track, pretty much so. And then COVID hit, meetings were held, the design was like 90%, I believe, completed. They were up to the point of hiring a project manager and then somebody found the snails, you know? Somebody found the snails and that kind of killed it. So the building permitting and licensing update, and I'm glad you put update here because it used to be a lot worse, but I think now it's, you know, we still have, we still have obstacles, that public hearing thing. You know, the, there was a public hearing or meeting scheduled for the Vista Del Mar 600 million dollar project up there up north. And it killed the meeting because the mayor's office, whom they were required to do a public hearing, messed up on the dates of the notification. We couldn't bring it before the board, you know? And that's a 600 million dollar project. And, and then, not only that, we have the smaller projects, you know? I mean, if we're willing to delay a 600 million dollar project because it was not legally publicized and notified, I mean, you know, think about the guy that wants to build an apartment, you know, if he doesn't get that thing right, it's, it's held back, you know, on it. I don't know how you balance that out, you know, public notice transparency and like that. But we are going by the law. If it's not properly noticed, you know, it's like when an agency gives people races and it's not, it's not notified or publicized, you know, then it's no good, right? So there are some obstacles, but by and large, I believe the building and permitting process, licensing, we got the Island School done in, in less than 90 days to do it and there are some there, but you know, I'd just like to see if Cisco can maybe reapply for that warehouse, Cisco. Thank you, thank you, Senator.
Thank you for all of that great information, Mr. Borja. You wanna work at my office? Any, any further comments from the panel? No? All good?
We do want to thank you, Senator, for taking the time. And the next steps for the Economic Diversification Working Group is basically presenting all of this as well to the governor. And, and then we'll be attending the Select USA Conference to, with foreign direct investments, investors, over 2,000 of them. And then, but we'd like to continue the discussion and for you to encourage your colleagues to, to look at the presentation that we provided and really take serious, a good, hard look at where Guam stands related to our competitors just in the United States. This is just our US competitors, doesn't even look at competitors like Taiwan, Singapore and in our backyard.
Before we close, I just wanted to clarify something regarding our housing crisis. The MCC program for mortgage credit, is that still being, still valid or still operational?
So the Mortgage Credit Certificate Program, sir, that is administered under Guam Housing. However, GIDA has looked into the cost of establishing it. Where we are, where we're trying to, what we are trying to marry is a bank's willingness to, to, to utilize the program and the enrollments under the program, the cost of administering the program and the number of enrollees into the program on an annual basis to make it worth it. So I'll give you an example. For example, if the legal and the compliance and all of that are $100,000 a year and only one house, one, one person qualifies, perhaps we might be better off giving 10 households $10,000 in down payment support versus, versus enrolling them in the Mortgage Credit Certificate Program. And so that's the math that we're contending with at the current time. And in addition, high, high mortgage rates are just, high mortgage, they are what they are. And we do anticipate the interest rates will start to come down in the coming 12 to 24 months. But it's just the, the, the combination of the interest rates are also, the combination of building costs and supply and demand, labor, and all of those things put together make for a very high threshold that we have to figure out if there's enough appetite in the community, even if we offer this product to, to be able to afford to buy a home at all with or without the aid.
Senator, in addition to that, we met recently, Land Management met recently with Guam Housing Corporation Management and they were looking for a pool of possibly qualified land owners. And Land Management has about possibly 1,600 lots, maybe about 1,200 of them are unoccupied. And they were looking for first-time homeowners of these properties. And these properties that we have under the Land for the Landless Program, we do have, they have infrastructure. One of the best ones is As Lucas in Talapofo, where it has sewer sidewalks, you know, fields and like that. So much so that they are subdividing those quarter, half-acre lots into quarter acre so they could have two houses on them and like that. So we do have a, a pool of Land for the Landless lots that, that may qualify under Guam Housing Corporation's program. First-time homeowners, one denial from the bank and the financial profile can be massaged to make them qualify. There is one holdback on that. In the law, they still have the 10-year alienation clause where if you get the property, you can't alienate it, you can't give it to your son, you can't give it to your husband, for example, only the applicant. I think the legislature should take a look at that because that's holding it back for some of these people, you know, on it. And the Land for the Landless Program started in 1980. If you haven't paid your 2,500 purchase price on it, you know, these lots started out as 2,500 and some of them are worth 80, 90,000 now, especially the ones up in, in Moleso overlooking a Coco's Island and like that. So I think it's just a matter of...
You're talking about Iya?
I'm sorry?
Iya?
Piga. Iya is in Alahan. That also has infrastructure and paved roads, it just needs houses.
No further comments? Okay. This concludes today's public hearing. The time is now 4:31, we got 30 more minutes for work. This public hearing is adjourned. Take care, have a good day, God bless.